Good morning and welcome to Thursday, June 27, 2019 Business Meeting. I'd ask the County Administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Yes, Commissioners, first staff support today, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board, roll call Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have citizen communication. And you have three minutes, so give us your name and where you're from. And Mario Mamone and Steve Hoagland.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mario, you're up first.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Bernard, and good morning Commissioners. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you. I haven't been here since, I think, 2015, when we were working on the marijuana ordinances and all of the work associated with that. I come to you to ask you some other questions right now. There is two types of dispensaries in Clackamas County, those that are in cities and those that are unincorporated Clackamas County. The ones in unincorporated Clackamas County have different operating hours than the ones in the cities. When we first got together with you back in 2015, working with the Planning Commission, we had established the operating hours from 10:00 in the morning to 9:00 in the evening. And those hours were arbitrary because that's what we were operating at the time, and we were only dispensary operating then. Since then, the cities and the counties, their dispensaries operate anywhere from about 7:30 in the morning to 10:00 at night. So there's a discrepancy in hours. So again, we open at 10:00, the cities open around 8:00, they close at 10:00, we close at 9:00. So what we're asking is that if we could be considered as part of the work plan, that we can get those hours adjusted so that we have equal footing in this competitive market. Excuse me. When we first spoke with you back in 2015, when we developed the time, place, and manner regulations for dispensaries, there were only four dispensaries in the county. Right now, there is 10 dispensaries in unincorporated Clackamas County. There is five dispensaries on McLaughlin Boulevard, two on 82nd Drive, two on Highway 212, and one on Highway 26. Within the cities of the county, there are 14 dispensaries now, where there were none back in 2015. Oregon City has 10, Malala has two, and Milwaukee has two. So the competition is keen. We're competing with 14, 23 other dispensaries right now. And it seems only right that we be on the same footing by being able to operate at the same hours. We presented this issue to the Planning Commission Board, and they, the criteria with which they use to select projects to work on will never select us to be a priority because the system, the priority system, is geared against us. So they suggested we come and talk to you specifically, so that's what I'm doing today. And I'm representing all the other dispensaries within unincorporated Clackamas County. There is no way for our voice to be heard through this process. As businesses in the county, now the marijuana business, cannabis business in Clackamas County is huge, and it's much greater than just the dispensaries. I'd like for you to consider us as businesses within the county that need to have some kind of consideration to be able to operate equally with the other dispensaries in the county. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I'd like to comment. We spent two years, it put us behind two years, working on marijuana issues. I have no intention of putting it on the agenda. If two board members would like to put it on the agenda, they can. But we have, we spent five years trying to get caught up, and this puts us behind two years. And it's not like we can just do it. It requires public notification, hearings, and so I have no interest in doing this. Maybe next year, in 2020, but right now, it's, you know, if the Board would like to bring it up, they're welcome to do it. Anybody else want to say anything?
I'll just say that today is our budget discussion, and we're going to approve a budget, and things are not looking very pretty. So staff time is cost money. And so I will echo Chair Bernard's comments on this one. It has put us behind, and a lot of other priorities have been put behind. So, you know, have we not have so much on our plate and have so little resources to deal with what's on our plate? Maybe at a better time, we'll look at it.
Okay. I appreciate your consideration. If I might add two simple points. One is that the Planning Commission recognized this as a simple process, as we look at the difficulty of all the different processes, it was a simple process from their analysis. The other thing, we're probably one of the few projects that actually will bring revenue to the county. As our hours increase and our business increase, the tax revenues increase, so will the tax revenues to the county. So we're probably the only project in the whole scale of things that actually will make money for the county, and it's something just to consider for the future. Thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you.
Tony?
Well, I hadn't got planned, I hadn't planned on being called second, and it was even yesterday late afternoon, and he decided to come. So a lot of this is ad lib. My, I guess, number one concern of why I would come here is I found out probably not much you can do, other than just feeling better that I said it. I entered, I live in Damascus, and I moved out of Damascus prior to 2004, so the incorporation vote didn't affect me or apply to me. And I moved in a couple months after the May election in 16. So either side of it, I have opinions, but they're mine. My concern is, and I don't know, not an attorney and haven't been up, I just, it was a week ago that I even found where to find out information on all this. Is the state via the county wanting to change state law about supermajority, regardless if it affects Damascus or Vernonia or anybody? But is, if that's correct, I'm curious about that. And then to your point of cost and expenses of the county. From what I can see, the existing city of, then the court said, in theory, that Damascus has always existed, and there's all kinds of financial implications. But I would assume that they would just say, fine, we're broke, can we get a little bit of billing to move forward? Because they haven't, if it goes back to how it was before financially, don't they have an income source? I don't know, but I would guess they did in one point or another. So since I'm getting nervous, I'll go ahead and read my notes, and if they make sense, great. If they don't, just fill it in or use Whiteout, wherever you want to. So I'd add that the final decision, the emergency status of the bill the Governor may sign, be postponed until November 2020 election. That would save costs, I would think, on the whole, if they were to vote again, process. And then also, just to save face. I didn't live there, so I didn't know the people that were bickering or not bickering or clapping or yelling. But my guess is, when it originally passed, everybody had an intention of what it would do. And I don't think politically and personality-wise that happened as smoothly as they thought. I believe the extra time of a year, year and a half can be spent pursuing legal questions and allowing the city of Damascus the opportunity to prove its financial and management skills. And I talked about moving to and from. My concern today, and I don't know what the answer is, is is Clackamas County encouraging the state to change the law of empowering authority of supermajority? If the state and county is able to change the definition of the supermajority, then I ask that it not be retroactive. My two questions, or my two requests are these. Please ask the Governor to postpone signing Senate Bill or SB 22060, and then allow the Corporation of Damascus time to reorganize its finances and legal obligations. Excuse me, I got a couple words. Review any, review and reverse any negative or positive implications resulting from the overturned votes. And hopefully, this is time to allow both sides to this issue, the ability to find middle ground. And I said my piece, and I don't know if you have any ability to do that, other than encourage the Governor to hold off. Because I guess, a couple days ago, the House listened to it, had a second conversation about it, and then they signed it. The Subcommittee, I guess, looked at it, talked about it, and then they signed it that day. So they've moved, they can move that fast. Though I would hope that the Governor can too.
All right.
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill Weir and Jim DeYoung. Morning. Thank you for coming.
Well, good morning. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. In a letter from Clackamas County Board of Commissioners to the state legislatures on May 23, 2019, the Commissioners requested, quote, "A final resolution to ending the city of Damascus." The Commissioners claim in the letter that, quote, "It's not possible to restore the city to its pre-disincorporation status." But the Appeals Court unanimous ruling of May 1, 2019, that the Damascus disincorporation vote of 2016 forced on the city by the state legislature was illegal. Not only illegal, but the court ruled that the city should return to, quote, "resume their home rule constitutional right of self-governance," unquote. When Damascus surrendered its city charter in 2016, all of its assets, including approximately 8.4 million in cash, real estate property, office equipment, went to the county. The county then, over time, spent the cash and sold off the real estate for a low-ball fire sale price to the Fire District on a non-open bid process. Ultimately, 3.4 million was returned to the taxpayers. Damascus is now left with zero cash or other assets. The county had a fiduciary responsibility to Damascus taxpayers that the money would be handled in a trustworthy manner. The county Commissioners knew that the suit by James DeYoung that challenged the state force ballot measure was pending a decision by the Appeals Court. Why did it not place the cash and real estate in escrow until this was resolved? The Commissioners should aid the city of Damascus currently in rebuilding itself to the rightful position as a self-governing city. Among the areas that could be of help is identifying and assisting retrieving all income streams available to Damascus. This would include coordinating with the state, recapturing the prorated loss of city income for the years of 2016 through 19, solution of the return of cash sent to the county in 2016 in violation of the city's charter, return of city records and documents that were given to the county, return of office equipment and fixtures, just compensation for the sale of real estate by the Commissioners. And as an aside, I appeared before this commission back on June 29, 2017, voicing concern about the county meeting its fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Damascus, brought into question the process in which it was done, the manner, the sales price, and so forth. The only, the only response I received, I just finished up just 20 seconds, was the next week, one of you said on commission that you would have given it to the Fire District anyway. But I feel that Damascus could do a better job of handling its assets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, pardon me, Chair Bernard and the other Commissioners of Clackamas County Commission, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm James DeYoung, the duly-appointed Mayor of Damascus. I've sought this opportunity to speak to you today because you could find no opening, Chair Bernard, to talk to me until the end of the summer. So here I am today as Mayor of Damascus. I have two points to make this morning. First of all, I want to urge you, the Clackamas County Commission, to accept the reality of the appellate court decision of May 1, 2019, that nullified the disincorporation vote of May 17, 2016. Quoting from part of that decision, which was titled "DeYoung versus Brown," the court quoted various words on whether the case was moot. And that concerned various issues, such as surrendering the charter, and that was a fictitious. The city was never disincorporated. The city can function again as a jurisdiction. And fourth, the people of Damascus retain their constitutional right of home rule charter. Now, those were the statements that we had as our case, I as the plaintiff. The court went on then to discuss that whole case and came to the conclusion that the plaintiff should prevail. Three times, they say that in that ruling. Thus, the appellate court directly nullified House Bill 3085 and 3086, finding that they violated statutory law. The court explicitly said that there were other constitutional issues involved, as well as charter, city charter issues, but said it didn't need to address these, since these House bills clearly violated statutory law of themselves. Now, the appellate court, which is the only existing judgment on the city of Damascus, had decided that Damascus never disincorporated and never surrendered its charter. In fact, the Oregon Constitution says the only people who can surrender a charter are the city council of a city. It cannot be mandated by the state legislature, by the Governor, or by any other authority in the state. And Damascus never surrendered its charter. We never had a meeting in which we voted to surrender our charter, either before or after that election. If this is the current law of the state, why does this commission refuse to acknowledge it? Even Senate Bill 226 totally ignores this appellate court decision. Finally, and secondly, the city of Damascus is trying to function again as a corporate entity. Yet this commission has blocked every effort to do that. We cannot reestablish our IGAs with the sheriff, the fire, the sewers, planning with water. All of these refuse to do so because of your judgment that we are not a city. I've offered a 10-point plan that moves the city forward and appeals to the idea of reconciliation. That's our key word. We're offering an olive branch to this commission, as well as to Happy Valley. We would like to see that olive branch responded to. The existing council and its budget, with the lowest tax rate in the entire county, is about to be passed, and we ask you to join us while we are offering this olive branch. Our key word is reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may.
Yes.
I'm just going to say that I spoke to Mr. DeYoung and others from Damascus, formerly in Damascus, and various viewpoints on this. And it is a strange conundrum that we're in. It really is. And that's why, you know, I think the intent, in my mind, when we sent that letter, was state, you created this deal, you facilitated or accommodated a vote in which, you know, the voters spoke, and state, go fix it, kind of a thing. Because we're somewhat powerless in quite, in quite a number of respects to resolve it. And Jim and I, Jim, you and I had a great conversation, I think we spoke for a long, long time. And the conundrum, one of the conundrums being, the most simplest one, and I won't go into all the detail, because we could be here for a long time, and we have a lot on our plate here today. But I think the conundrum is, is how do we know, or how does, how do you know, how does Paul know, how does each of us know what the will of the voters that, or the residents of what Damascus is, either in its present form or its hypothetical original form? You know, if those annexations are or are not recognized. What is the will of voters? And we just don't know that. I thought that, from what little research I did, but I did do some research on this and trying to find out what charter status is, and you mentioned that, and trying to find out what really did happen in the past, that just the work it would take to figure out how to unwind this, and, so to speak, if you were on the path of reinstating the city, what that would look like. And that'd be a tremendous amount of work. And I know you've done some of that. It sounds like you've done a lot of work, and I'm already, always learning more as I hear people input on what has been discovered as far as the status of the charter and what a charter is. And I thought, well, maybe one way the state would address that is, is that, okay, if you really don't know what the will of voters is, because you can't just tax people, you can't tax them without their approval, and you're going to go from a zero tax rate to a new tax rate. So how do you do that? Is there a will of voters, you know, or the residents to be taxed? And if so, in this state, and I think properly so, you don't tax people without their consent. So that's, that's a conundrum. I mean, I'm just touched on a few of those details. But I thought perhaps maybe the state would come up with something and say, okay, maybe they organize a vote or whatnot. And I don't even know if this bill, frankly, is, I'm concerned, it's just another chapter, right? This story's going to go on, and this is not the end. It's just another chapter. And unfortunately, it's extremely complicated, and as you and I spoke, I think the uncertainty that we have, I think that we shared at least that one evening, was we really don't know what the residents of Damascus feel. Do they want to reform or not reform? Do they want a tax rate or not a tax rate? Are you a city without a tax rate? Don't know. So I'm hoping that, and it doesn't look like the bill as written is going to really provide opportunity to learn what is on the mind of the residents of Damascus today. It's simply going to make a judgment or a determination in which. So it, from when we wrote the letter or sent the letter, what we, what I anticipated and what is out there today is a little bit different. But don't want to belabor the conversation, but it is quite the conundrum. I think it's going to be a little piece of Oregon history, regardless how it turns out.
May I say two short things? First of all, the law is the law, and by that, we all submit to it, whether we like it or not, in some instances. And the appellate court decision is the law of this state at the present moment. Secondly, I've created a five-point plan for Clackamas County to simplify the process of getting back to where we were. And our key word is reconciliation. We're willing to forgive and to forget an $8 million loss if we can go forward from this point. And part of that means having IGAs in place so that we can promise the people that we will serve them with fire, police, sewer, and all the other protections and services that this city could do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move on. We have Denise McGriff. Oh, oh, excuse me, and you're an Oregon City Commissioner.
I am not here under that capacity.
You're on, in.
Yes. Anyway, thank you Commissioners. I'm Denise McGriff, and I happen to live in the fabulous city of Oregon City, the oldest incorporated city west of the Missouri River. And as you know, we are celebrating our 175th birthday coming up here very soon. We hope to see you there. I'm here today as a member of the Clackamas County Heritage Council. I represent two organizations that are members of that organization, and I'm here to thank you for your support. I also want to thank publicly Laura and Greg for their support through Business Development Services in housing our program manager. I want you to know that without that program manager, we would not have been able to move forward to the meeting that we had with you on the 21st of May, and we're looking forward to meeting with you again on the 30th of July. As you very well know, Clackamas County's roots are in heritage. Even though Oregon City was here first, Clackamas County was the biggest county in the entire region. And that's, that's something to not be unproud of. We basically feel that you have been very helpful to us in moving us forward to the point that we are today, but we still need support. We are an organization of 30-plus sites and museums. We all have a lot on our own plates right now. I myself am juggling two or three organizations, and we do it gratefully, we do it willfully, and we do it with deliberation because we care about our heritage here in Oregon City and in Clackamas County and all of our communities. But we just wanted to make sure that you knew that we're still with you, working with you, and we look forward to continued support and working with you on a solution to this conundrum that we have with regard to how we move heritage forward in Clackamas County. And thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll close the public portion hearing, or citizen communication portion of this, and begin with our first public hearing.
Yes, Commissioners, your first public hearing is a second reading of Ordinance Number 02-2019, Amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan. Dave Queener from the Development Agency is here to present.
Good morning, Dave Queener, the program supervisor for the Development Agency. And we are here this morning for the second reading of the ordinance that amends the Clackamas Industrial Area Urban Renewal Plan boundary. The first reading of the ordinance took place at the Board's Business Meeting on May 9. Second reading was June 13, but was tabled to today's date. The amendment to the plan is necessary because Happy Valley is considering adopting an urban renewal plan where the boundary would encompass 172nd Avenue and that area around it. This area is currently within our CIA boundary, excuse me, and the area cannot be within two boundaries at the same time. Therefore, removing it from our boundary allows the Happy Valley urban renewal area to incorporate into theirs. There are no other projects to be completed within the area that the agency would remove, and we are no longer receiving a division of taxes in this district. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I just have a technical one. So because this is actually the third hearing, is it still officially called the second hearing?
It's a continuation, I believe. I think it's a continuation.
Because I recall that the verbiage was that there were, that we could have a third hearing. So I just, it's more of a, just more informational for me than it is.
You need two minimum.
Yep. So you could, you could have four.
Okay.
Yep.
But it's still called the second?
You could call it what you like.
Okay. Just curious, just trying to understand the technicalities, if any.
Commissioner, well, I was going to say that one thing we do not have is the agreement with Happy Valley in our packet.
So I emailed that to you, Commissioners. I don't know if it's in the actual packet of today's meeting, but I did send that to you, so you saw the document.
Okay.
So Happy Valley did answer the requests we, or added the requests you asked them to regarding affordable housing in their document.
Okay.
To the staff's satisfaction.
Well, we're going to take some comments from one of the city councilors, so I will open, I got to find my, just my script, it got moved. All right. I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. And I have Brett Sherman from Happy Valley City Council. Welcome, and thank you for coming today.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Bernard. Commissioners, for the record, I am Brett Sherman, Happy Valley City Council President. Got a little thing put together for you today. So I'd like to start by thanking you, all of you, not just for the opportunity to speak today, but for your willingness, over the course of the last few weeks, to share ideas and discuss the city's urban renewal plan. By working together, we have the ability to do something great around 172nd Avenue, and with the many other projects that will benefit our county together. The city is appreciative that the county's urban renewal district was able to construct 172nd Avenue south of Sunnyside. And now that the county district has come to a close, the city is focused on completing the northern half. As we discussed, for Happy Valley to invest in this regional facility, it requires the county to reme- county to remove the roadway from the Clackamas Industrial Area Urban Renewal District. We appreciate that you've continually advocated for this project at the Metro T2020 table and look forward to your support for this project today. Also, I want to address the interest of the commission for the city to include an investment in affordable housing in the city's urban renewal plan. I personally appreciated speaking to each of you regarding this important and timely initiative, following some very fruitful conversations. Staff members from both our agencies worked together on language to meet your requests. Essentially, that language provides direction for the city to work with the Clackamas Housing Authority to develop an affordable housing action plan. Funds will be made available to support mixed income housing developers by acquiring land, paying development fees, and the like. We will also specifically include annual reporting on the progress of these activities to Clackamas County. The city council is actively working to increase mixed income housing and we are eager to work with Clackamas Housing Authority and other providers to deliver more affordable units in Happy Valley. And, you know, today, your yes vote is imperative in achieving this goal. I want to thank you again for your support of 172nd Avenue and sharing your concepts to add mixed income housing to the city's urban renewal plan. And again, I want to thank you for your time.
Well, I thank you and I thank Happy Valley, the mayor and council and staff for working with us to address the housing needs of people less fortunate. And I wish I had thought of this a long time ago, you know, when Wilsonville did their urban renewal project. And so kind of a test and we we all passed and I'm excited to move forward and work with you guys to address the needs of those less fortunate.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for your friendship, camaraderie, and collaboration on this. And C4 was very much a success, especially the early morning hike that we took, which was on the schedule. And that was a wonderful time to just share common goals, priorities, and to see what is actually both of our agendas, but then written down in an urban renewal plan is really wonderful. And I appreciate your efforts in facilitating that. Thank you, Councilor.
Great, thank you. With that, anyone else? We'll close the public portion of the hearing? No, it's not the one.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we read the ordinance by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll ask the court to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is ordinance number 02-2019, amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan.
Ask, I'll ask for a motion.
I move we adopt the ordinance amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the ordinance amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you. Well, the next 12 public hearings are budget-related. And go ahead.
All right, so Commissioners, you are about to hopefully adopt the county budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. The first public hearing to do that is a resolution adopting the Clackamas County budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Jennifer Chambers, Budget Manager, will present.
Thank you. Good morning, Jennifer Chambers, Budget Manager. I'm here today to request the adoption of the fiscal year 2019-20 budget for Clackamas County. This is the final step in a multi-step public process. This budget was approved by the Budget Committee, which is comprised of the county commissioners and five citizen volunteer members. The committee held public meetings May 28 through June 4. During those meetings, the committee heard presentations from departments, received public testimony, deliberated, and then amended and approved the budget. The approved budget was published in the Lake Oswego Review on June 20. The budget includes the Budget Committee's acceptance of the recommendation of the Compensation Board for Elected Officials to make salary adjustments for the assessor, clerk, district attorney, and treasurer salaries, as well as an amended recommendation for adjustments to the commissioner's salaries. Similarly, the budget includes acceptance of the recommendation of the county administrator to grant a 3.5% cost of living increase for non-represented employees. To establish the budget for fiscal year 1920, there are four specific actions to be taken today. First is to adopt the budget of $862,850,923. Second, make appropriations in the amount of $805,619,176, the difference being $57,231,747 held in reserves, which is not being appropriated and will not be spent this year. Third, categorize the permanent tax rates and local option tax as falling under the general government limitation for Measure 5 purposes and the levy for general obligation bond indebtedness as excluded from that limitation. And finally, to impose the county's maximum permanent tax rates of 2.4042 per 1,000 of assessed value in cities that have 24-hour city police patrol services and 2.9766 per 1,000 of assessed value in all other areas of the county. To also impose .2480 per 1,000 of assessed value in the county for public safety via a local option levy and in the amount of $4,979,000 for debt service on general obligation bonds. With this, I respectfully request adoption of the 2019-20 budget for Clackamas County.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to try to keep this in the order that Robert's Rule says. And first, ask a question if you have any. And then we'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing, there'll be a motion, and then we can do some of our talking points. I have some, Paul has some, some of you guys might have some. So I want to do that throughout this so we can move through it. And so are there any questions? Seeing none? I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the actions and adopt the 2019-2020 budget for Clackamas County as presented in the resolution.
Second.
Wait, I got to think about this second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, okay, so before we vote, all right, just a, all right, and there was a second, right? All right. It's removed and seconded that we approve the action and adopt the 2019-2020 budget for Clackamas County as presented in the resolution. All those in favors?
No, discussion.
Discussion. So first, Sonia.
So I just want to declare, and I did this at the budget hearing, but want to state that my husband was involved with the Clackamas County Arts Alliance in the past. He was a part of Youth Theater for Change. He is no longer involved receiving any funds from the Clackamas County Arts Alliance. But as we all know, I'm a huge arts advocate and I just wanted to declare that potential appearance of a conflict. And also, the other thing that I haven't ever declared, but I probably should, because people do know that I have a daughter with special needs who lives in Happy Valley in a foster home, and she's actually receives her services, we moved her to Multnomah County so that I would never have to declare a conflict. But just because I'm declaring possible appearances of conflict, I want to state that my daughter's services do not come from Clackamas County. So with that, I don't know if anybody else has any other.
Ken?
Yes, this is, this was a difficult budget year and I want to commend our new general manager for the efforts that he and his staff have put forward on this. I don't think that he expected to run into to the this brick wall as quickly as as he has. But you've done an excellent job of getting us a budget that will get us through the next year. Your team, making the cuts that they had to make, are to be commended for that effort. I know that you are going to be tearing this budget apart over the next year to figure out how we and make sure that we have an excellent budget for the following year. That's a difficult job. I want the citizens to understand that we do not get the kinds of monies we used to get from the state and we don't get the kind of money we used to get from the federal government. So much of what we have to deal with in today's day and age is on all of our backs as local citizens. That makes budgeting considerably more difficult. But I I think your staff did yeoman service in trying to to get us a good budget this year. I want to thank you for your efforts, especially given the fact that you got handed this literally days after you were hired for the job. So thank you.
Martha?
Yeah, I also want to thank the staff for all their hard work because we're going to be facing challenges, but challenges that are not insurmountable. The good news with the county is that we are really implementing Managing for Results, which is a framework whereby we really look at outcomes across the domains of every service that we offer in this county. So it will give us a roadmap for the future for true sustainability. There'll be hard choices because we'll have to look at, you know, what areas potentially are not meeting their outcomes. And that will be, give us the roadmap of what we keep and what we don't keep. But I do want to condemn commend our staff for the hard budget work and also the work that we do in really moving into this new framework to continue to keep this county sustainable and offering the services that have outcomes for the constituents of of the entire county. So thanks, Gary. Thanks, Mary.
Before I go to you, Paul, I just want to also declare a potential conflict. My wife was the director of tourism. They are funded through tourism tax, which pays her salary. She now, however, works on contract until her replacement is found and she's also a state president of something for tourism.
Oh, come on, Jim.
And so I just also want to declare a potential conflict. With that, Paul.
Yeah, well, I want to recognize all of the budget staff in the room. I see a number of folks in the room here from budget and also some of the budget folks from departments as well. So I want to thank you for all your hard work in these difficult times. Want to acknowledge our new administrator and thank our new administrator. Him and I have had a lot of discussions and had a lot of discussions with our staff. I see Krista's not here today. I know she's on vacation. And had a lot of discussions with her early in the year in January about what my sense was, was the, what I had brought up a year ago in regard to, to me, somewhat of an obvious error in the in the forecasting. So thank you for what you're doing. So this is no way any of my comments dare reflection on the staff and the good work they've done. So I just want to get that out there. And I I'll say that additionally, the two things I think that are key that give me a little bit of comfort with the budget, and that is that the administrator is going to start, initiate a zero-based budgeting process and also a hiring freeze. I think those are two means to help mitigate and get to where we need to be as far as a better budget for next year. This year, staff validated, again, what I had stressed last year with regards to a large error in the budget forecast. Since staff confirmed the error, my goal is, and still and has been, to reform the process of the Budget Committee towards a more meaningful role, ideally beginning in January and more consistent with state budget law. And I can expand on that, but we don't have a lot of time today. In the process of analyzing how this happened, I discovered what I believe are flaws in the audit committee process as well. That unfortunately seems to lack adequate checks and balances, oversight, transparency. And this is not a reflection on the auditor, it's just a reflection on our on our structure of our audit committee. And when I compared that to other counties, I think there's are better ways and and there's great examples here locally in the metro region where that that process has got a lot more oversight and transparency. In my opinion, it's not acceptable when a county commissioner or a budget committee member sounds an alarm but is immediately dismissed and is not researched or is taken seriously. And I think that was the unfortunate thing that took place last year. The process for the budget and the audit are in need of reform. And though I attempted to change the format somewhat this year to adjust that this spring, there was still no support to do so. Hence, I'm raising the issue here today. The audit committee process fails to adequately involve the citizens with expertise in finance and instead it mostly, it's mostly stacked with internal staff. It lacks a transparent process and fails the reporting function to the Board of County Commissioners, which there should be a more robust reporting process. During the budget process last year, and again this year, I propose we add, I propose we added another internal auditor. That was not accepted. While other counties have several independent internal auditors, we only have one. The budget committee process fails to provide the members opportunity to make important and meaningful adjustments and most of the time of this is spent on presentation and questions and answers. We had started earlier, had we started earlier in the year, the budget committee could have focused on meaningful cuts. But in light of the unsustainable $5.8 million expenditures that are above our projected revenue for the year, that's that's, it's a tall order, but getting a late start, and I'll give just a brief example, the budget committee doesn't see the budget until seven days before the budget. That's not adequate time. And my my goal or hope was that we could start earlier in the year, again, in January or something like that, so we could actually rectify this. I recognize the the predicament the staff have found themselves in this year. They did manage to cobble together $5.8 million to make up the difference in order to balance the budget and in the fill in the fill the gap. Consequently, unfortunately, $5.8 million is, you know, potentially going to be lost in this one-time funding. And I'm concerned we're not able to really quantify, frankly, the outcomes or objectives of what that $5.8 million is, other than mine time. So I appreciate all the hard work, but I just think that as stewards of the of the public's monies, this is one of our very fundamental processes that I that is important. And I think that I'm certain that we'll be able to rectify it next year. But the cuts are not only going to be $5.8 million, we know they're going to be far deeper than that. But again, I think I've got a little bit of comfort with the zero-based budgeting that's going to start soon and also the the hiring freeze to help us mitigate those concerns.
All right, so Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have an excellent budget committee and I do want to say a thank you to our budget committee and of course, our staff that worked very, very hard on this budget. I appreciate my colleagues' comments that we are entering into a new era. When different constituency groups, different nonprofits came to discuss with, I think, all of us as Commissioners, one of the messages that I said to everyone who came is, if you are receiving county general fund money, really look at other opportunities to raise money elsewhere because we don't know how we're going to use our very limited general fund dollars into the future. The county budget is based on county general fund, money from the state, money from the feds, grants, other resources, and very little discretionary dollars are for our general fund. And when you look at Maslow's hierarchy of needs and what we must provide, safety in our community and basic needs for people is one of our very core functions. So that is where we must dedicate our discretionary dollars and really want to work with all of our partners in our nonprofit community and our different constituencies to strategize, think thoughtfully and strategically about the future.
All right, thank you. I'm still trying to figure out whether I should really debate this subject or not, but I think that there's still a misunderstanding of what our external audit committee does. I think, and that is to make sure that the transactions of federal and state money are done according to the law accounting rules, which there are many. Having almost become an accountant, didn't do the last year of it, there are lots of accounting rules that change. Now, and I think that one solution might be an internal audit committee. Could do that, but I think that could be a function we we could talk to the treasurer about because the external people, they don't do that. They just make sure the transactions are clean. So it might be an, it might be a good discussion with the treasurer to talk about an internal audit committee. While we already have one, but we we look at specific issues that arise through the complaint system, basically. And I've never really talked to him about an internal audit committee. It might be something to look at, but I I have some comments here. We are dealing with a budget situation where costs are rising faster than revenue. Simply, our property tax revenue is rising at 4.5% per year. Simply, our property tax revenue is rising at 4.5% per year while our anticipated expenses are rising at about 7%. The cause of this increase in personnel costs driven by increased wages and benefits and the increase of about 16% in the PERS retirement system obligation. Additionally, there was an adoption of several new programs over the past year, which then became part of the ongoing budget, compounding the long-term fiscal impact, often because they involved hiring new employees and personnel costs that traditionally outpace inflation. Also, we're dealing with unknown impacts from several perspectives. The opportunity to get state matching funds for new county courthouse. So far, the county has committed $1.2 million in general fund revenue to, for the project planning. And we heard yesterday that the state has committed $31.5 million to build in a courthouse. An ongoing assessment of county's financial and human resource business needs and the resulting tech, technology changes. Our technology, it changes so fast, and we have a, our system is, I, I believe they may no longer be servicing it in the future. We need to look at new technology, and that's very expensive these days. I know that computers were supposed to save us a lot of time and money. The county is in the process of implementing a statewide mandated pay equity act, which may have significant impact on our general fund. At the beginning of the budget year, the deficit stood at 7.4 million. That deficit has been offset with departmental cuts, one-time resources to provide a legally balanced budget. Unlike the state or federal government, we're required to have a balanced budget. The departments were asked to cut 2% to 5% without reducing staff. By doing this, we were able to cut the deficit by more than half, about 4.5 million. We have identified funds to close the remaining gap by drawing from non-recurring revenue to balance the budget. We recognize this is a temporary fix. That's why we're taking steps to head off these potential issues going forward and to build a strong, sustainable budget system. All future budget increases requests will include a full cost analysis. Further steps will be needed to include a full review of our budget process, potentially deferring maintenance, and even potentially a hiring freeze. These are necessary steps to ensure that we are building a sustainable budget so that we can continue to provide services needed throughout the county. I want to thank the county administrator and staff for the hard work and the Budget Committee for the time and work involved. And I, I hope, I, we intend to include the Budget Committee more closely in developing and our zero-based budget. That's one term you can use. And also, you know, some, some of those folks may need some training in zero-based budgets. I got that training about 11 years ago. Things have probably changed a little bit, but zero is still zero. So I look forward to doing that and passing this budget and working hard to make sure that we, we address this in the future. There's, there's a lot of potential. Clackamas County, it, you know, I think one analogy was the jaws of death. I appreciate that wasn't used today, but that it's also true that we will always get tax revenue, and it will always increase at at least 3% by state law. And so we can manage that, or we can let it get, take control of us, and we've committed to it. During the down economy, we had a lot of tough issues. We had staff cut, layoffs in our planning department, many others, because things weren't being built, and then we had to build them back. That means rehiring, hiring people to fill those spaces, and those, that costs money. And one of the things we are doing is trying to get full cost recovery from our planning department, our health and human resources, I'm not health and human, health, housing, and
Services.
And human services department, which is something that lots of people talk about. We still maintain our reserves and contingency, which, you know, I'm going to fight to keep as much as we can, and I think we will. We are AAA-rated county, and so when we borrow money, we get the best rates, and we need to make sure we maintain that. And I, was Ken first or Paul first?
I think Commissioner Savis was first.
Okay, Paul.
Yeah, well, thanks, Jim. I, and I'm, I'm not going to debate anything unless you choose to, you want to, but yeah, thank you for that. I do want to just say that my hope is, I look to my colleagues, to my right and left, that we actually will make some, some serious adjustments with that. I just wanted to give you an example. I've been in contact with the auditor the last two days and the auditing firm, which I have no quarrel with the auditing firm, but I would argue, for the most part, that we already have an, that the, our external Audit Committee actually is more internal than it is external. And a great example of that is that the fact that our Audit Committee only had one member from the public. And last year, we had one member from the public, and that's been the pattern for a long time. Contrary to Multnomah County, for example, that has somewhere between 12 and 15 public members on their external Audit Committee. We have one. Now, we, granted, we actually have more than one, only one showed up, so I think we have two, two or three, so.
I think it's three.
Three? Yeah. But historically, we've only had one show up, and, and that was true this year as well. So, but I think that really changing the process and, and making sure that it's primarily external, it would be a good start.
I don't care if we put 100 people on it. It's still a, the, the external auditor does certain things, so, anyway. Ken, and then Martha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make the point that an audit, as you did point out, Mr. Chairman, an audit is about what you did in the past and whether you did it right or you did not do it right by the law. It's really quite simple. It has nothing to do with going forward. It only has to do with, did you follow the law in the expenditure of the funds that you had allocated to you during the course of a year? And our audits have been good. The problem, quite simply, is a prognostication problem. In other words, how much money do we have coming in, we hope, for the next year, and where will we spend that money? Where I do think that we need to take a look, if I may suggest this, is that we know that our two neighbors have, I think around seven staff involved in budget analysis work and the software necessary to do the kind of prognostication towards the future that we need to have done. Our staff have been operating with the handicap of not having that software. So as we go forward, so, trying to, to repair the budget for the following year, I think that is something we need to take a look at. We, we can't expect a department of three people in a county this size and not even having the software necessary for, for future prognostication to, to be able to do as accurate a job as we would like without giving them the proper tools and enough staff to do the job. It has nothing to do with an audit. It has everything to do with prognostication in the future, so.
Forecasting.
You forecast, thank you, that's a better word, forecasting. So we need to give them the tools for, for, for forecasting that they, that they don't currently have, and if they, and the staffing that might be necessary. But as far as the audits are concerned, I've read the audits that we've received since I've been here, and we are doing a good job of spending the money legally, which is what an audit is supposed to determine. So I will close my remarks with that, and hopefully we can make sure the staff have the tools that they need to do the appropriate forecasting in the future.
Martha?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment about zero-based budgeting because I think, just for the public to understand essentially what that is, that was actually, it's a process that was developed in the 1970s. Basically, it talks about a zero base. What does that mean? What it means is the beginning of every budget period, we analyze the needs and costs of every function, okay, within an organization, and allocate funds accordingly, regardless, and this is the key to this, regardless of how much money has previously been budgeted to any given line item. So what it really is forcing you to do in many ways is to really do a look again at outcomes. What is working and what is not working? What is really giving our citizens the outcomes that they want to buy with their tax dollars? Some of the issues, frankly, we are dealing with, we can always point the finger, but I have to tell you, counties are often at the mercy of our federal partners and our legislative partners. Normative budgets that we might expect for revenue streams, for example, for housing, for human service delivery systems, for example, the mental health budgets have been cut at the state level, and it's going to, you know, mandate. We may actually be faced with taking some of our functions and handing them back to the state because we are at the mercy, quite frankly, of unfunded mandates. And that's unfortunate, but it's true. And from my perspective, being a local government official, it's always a pushback with our, particularly our state partners and often our federal, to say, you can give us things that you want us to fill a need, fill a gap, give the services, but if they come without the additional dollars to do the service, you put us, us at a disadvantage. But the good news is, because we are looking, we're going to do baseline budgeting, and as I said earlier, move forward with managing for results, it will at least give us a baseline. And I'd also like to thank Commissioner Fisher for stating that, yes, we have numbers of nonprofits coming to us this year. For example, our workforce board asks for $300,000. We are the, the only county in the region that is not actually giving dollars to our workforce, okay? Work Systems, Inc., and that serves Multnomah County and serves Washington County, gives public dollars to that nonprofit in order to get those pipelines and job creation and job training. We don't have the capacity to do that. So we're looking at ways, for example, what does that mean? One specific example for WorksSource, which is the outcome of getting people trained and ready for jobs and getting into the pipelines for, you know, prosperity. Basically, we're looking at, well, can we do some leveraging internally with staff? So there are different ways we're going to have to approach how we're going to be dealing with, with deficits. I do think we're a very responsible board. I want to thank Commissioner Savis. He's the detail man on the commission. I think he sees things, sees things very clearly. I'm glad that we're on a path to sustainability. But again, I also agree with Commissioner Humbertstent that our underlying assumptions of the amount of dollars that we're going to have moving forward have changed drastically. When you look at PERS, when you look at the Equitable Pay Act, when you look at trying to provide our own folks with standard of living increases so they can have a prosperous life in the county, all of those kinds of things are hard decisions, and those are the kinds of things that we have to deal with every day as elected officials, local elected officials. So thank you, colleagues, for all your hard work too. It isn't just the staff. I really appreciate every single one of you and the, and the diversity we bring to this board and the fact that we have a, we've got a really, I think, I've been here the longest, but Jim's the senior commissioner. Are you older than me? I don't know if you're older than me.
Are we talking about age or how long you've been here?
Well, no, I've been here, I've been here, I've been here. But I will tell you that this is one of the best commissions I've ever worked with. And I have to tell you, despite the fact we can always improve our budget process, the professionalism, the number, and the folks that we are now recruiting are absolutely stellar, people who are accountants, people have, who have access to public governing processes, who know how to do this. So through the years, I have to tell you, we are, we are reaching new levels of professionalism in the county from what I've seen from the early days way back in, you know, 2000. So, anyway, just my institutional perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I want to thank Martha for her comments, and, and I just want to, as she was speaking, I was, you know, we all went through, we had a number of people asking us for funds to do some, provide some very vital services, and that's, that's really the heartbreak about this, and it was frankly the heartbreak a year ago too as well. And I know that I was, I was very concerned about that, 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 you know, as a result of that, we might be, not be able to serve some of those people that are in dire need of help. So that's, that's why it's, you know, that's just one example of why it's such a big issue. I, I want to just, and again, and also the, you know, the fact that we're having a good discussion here today, and, and this is not about, you know, anything other than hopefully a path towards making some changes for the positive and the better. And in light of that, I just wanted to say one thing. I, I, you know, we, what I raised last week, for example, about the over expenditures that were recognized in the audit, okay? Those should have been, you know, should have been, shouldn't have happened, and they're embedded today in the consent agenda, and the consent agenda, you'll be, will be actually approving something that actually should have been done in June of last year or May of last year. So, but I want to, just one word of caution, and that, that word of caution is, is that it's not all, we need to open our minds and, and look at this and recognize it for some of the shortcomings of those processes and the Audit Committee and so forth. And if we don't, we're not going to get towards positive change. So my, my caution is, is that it's not all, dig a little bit deeper, let's discuss this at the right time, and let's get towards the positive change that we need in both the Audit Committee and the Budget Committee processes. It's not simple, I wish it was, and it's not all perfect, I wish it was. And part of the Audit Committee, I will say that is, is that ideally they're making recommendations that will improve the process or improve the, or limit the risk and just make us a better operation, and that's one of the functions of the Audit Committee.
And we've got a good team to do it. Just saying. Okay.
Just so you know, how long has Clackamas County been here?
175 years.
So I got here 10 years ago, there wasn't an Audit Committee. I created it. So that's why I'm a little, you know, protective, I would say, just so you know. And actually, Chris Story and I wrote the bylaws. So, anyway, with that.
You have a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion all the four. All, yes? No, he turned his slide off.
After you vote, I'd like to say something.
Okay. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nope. Passes for one. Thank you. Gary?
Yeah, so Commissioners, I do want to thank staff for their excellent work, yeoman's work on this budget from beginning to end, including all departments, the directors of departments and their financial staff, our finance office, Krista Wolf, the director, Haley Fish, the deputy director, Jennifer Chambers, this is her first budget as our budget manager, thank you, Jennifer, Laurel Buttman, deputy county administrator. Just thank them for all their work, and the Budget Committee and you as well, Commissioners. You are right, this is a transition budget. It is not sustainable. It will be going forward. All of us will work together on that. That's my commitment to you and our staff's commitment to you and to our public. So we look forward to working with you as we prepare for the 2020, 2021 budget. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. You know, I just want to make sure of this. We used to have to read the rate and all that stuff. I remember questioning this last year, and we don't have to because we adopted it in the budget process, right?
She read the rates.
Huh? Oh, you read them? Okay. We used to have to state them again when we made the motion. Up until last year, we did. That's my memory, but I could be wrong. All right, with that, we're moving on to the next public hearing. Gary?
Yes, next, a resolution adopting changed fees for Clackamas County for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Stephen Madcor, county council, will present.
Morning Commissioners. We have two matters before you that I'm going to briefly introduce, or both public hearings. The first one is a resolution, and it concerns the increase in fees that are applicable throughout the county. Fees are included in Appendix A of the county code. Fees have gone up this year. We've changed some of them. It's in building codes, it's in land use, some with the sheriff's office as well. The fees will be approved by resolution, and it will be a public hearing. And I'm here to answer any questions. The fees were previously presented to you by the various department heads and given tentative approval at that time.
Okay. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make the point for the public to understand why we are raising fees. We are trying to move to a full cost recovery model. We are trying to move to a full cost recovery model. We have essentially been subsidizing the costs of the, the issues that, of fees and fines, et cetera, are applied to. We can no longer afford to do that, and that's why this is before us today.
Actually, the taxpayers have been subsidizing other people's fees.
It's a good way to phrase it, yes.
So with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and adopt the changed fees for Clackamas County fiscal year 2019, 2020 as presented in the resolution.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approve and adopt the changed fees for Clackamas County's fiscal year 2019, 2020 as presented in the resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Next, ordinance adopting changed fees for Clackamas County for fiscal, charged fi, changed fines, thank you, for Clackamas County for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and declaring an emergency. Stephen Madcor will also present.
Yes, good morning again. This is the second public hearing matter. We do fines by ordinance, fees by resolution, so this will be a ordinance change. We're going to do it by one reading, provided it's unanimous by this board. There is going to be an increase in fines proposed by two different departments. One is Dog Services has an increase in fines that they're proposing. The other is the sheriff's office. And this will also be a public hearing.
And we've already seen these previously.
Yes, sir, you have.
All right. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone, oh, wait, any questions?
Well, yes, thank you. Ask legal counsel to tell us why there is, we are declaring an emergency.
You are declaring an emergency, so these fines and fee, well, these fines will be applicable July 1st, so they can be captured immediately. Alternatively, it would be 90 days. Typically, when we do fines and fees, we do declaration of emergency, so they're effective immediately.
And they were probably included in the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, right.
Ken?
Thank you. I have a question of the sheriff's department on the noise ordinance fine increase. One of the reasons that we brought that forward is we've had problems with loud parties, and what citizens were told was that you had to have a noise meter in order to determine how loud the party was. Sheriff sergeants have the noise meter, not the sheriff's deputy. Almost inevitably, nothing gets to happen. So my question of the sheriff's department is, on a practical procedural basis, will that change so that a deputy, if he gets called or she gets called as a result of a loud party, can go up and basically say, the party's too loud, shut it down, or we will shut it down, and you'll get a ticket and a fine? That's my question. And I don't know if the sheriff's officers here today are prepared to answer that question, but I would appreciate it if they could get back to me if they can't answer it today. Thank you very much.
If I might, Commissioner, we have the noise, amendments to the noise ordinance in our code coming before the commission next week, and we can discuss that at that particular time. You do have the opportunity twice throughout a calendar year to increase fines and fees. So if you did want to increase the noise violation fees later on after adoption of the new code, you could certainly do it at that time.
This came to me from, from the deputies. I do a lot of ride-alongs, as you know, and, you know, it was a combination of what the deputies felt made it difficult to do their job, and what the citizens felt in terms of not getting the response they needed. And it's just a matter of, you know, I don't want to fix the blame, I just want to fix the problem, that's all.
I have a question for you, Ken.
Yes.
Right in the front seat or the back?
I'm right in the front seat now. Notice I said now. So far, I'm trying to behave.
Have I opened the public hearing yet? No. I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
So I move we read the ordinance by title only.
It's been moved in second that we read the ordinance by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? I'd ask clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, I'm also going to assign a number, O5-2019, an ordinance amending Appendix B fines of the Clackamas County Code and declaring an emergency.
Okay, so I will ask for a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the ordinance for the changed fines for Clackamas County fiscal year 2019, 2020 and declaring an emergency.
Second?
It's moved to second that we adopt the ordinance for changing fines for Clackamas County fiscal year 2019, 2020 and declaring an emergency. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The next, we are changing our hats. If you've got them, change them. The board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the enhanced law enforcement district for the next item. Gary?
Next public hearing, resolution adopting the enhanced law enforcement district budget for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Jennifer Chambers, budget manager, will present.
Thank you. So I am requesting adoption of the fiscal year 2019, 20 budget for the Clackamas County Enhanced Law Enforcement District. This district was created by the voters in 1995 with the goal of providing an improved level of patrol services in the unincorporated areas of the county. The district continues to support 36 sworn positions. As was the case for the general Clackamas County budget, this is the final step in a multi-step public process. This budget was approved by the district's budget committee, which met on June 3rd. They reviewed the budget, provided an opportunity for public testimony, deliberated, and approved the budget. The approved budget was published in the Lake Oswego Review on June 20th. There are four specific actions to be taken. Adopt the budget of $8,290,780. Make appropriations in that same amount. Categorize all tax revenue as falling under the general government limitation for Measure Five purposes. And finally, impose the district's maximum permanent tax rate of .7198 per 1,000 of assessed value within district boundaries. We request the adoption of the 2019, 20 budget for the Clackamas County Enhanced Law Enforcement District.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have any clarifying questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the actions and adopt the 2019, 2020 budget for the Clackamas County Enhanced Law Enforcement District as presented in the resolution.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approve the action and adopt the 2019, 2020 budget for the Clackamas County Enhanced Law Enforcement District as presented in the resolution. Any further discussion? Yeah, I just want to ask something. I'm just thinking of this, you know, you said it's still 36 officers, which must, must have been the agreement at the time it passed. County's grown a lot. It seems kind of that the number of staffing should have grown. It'd be interesting, look at the ordinance itself and see if, if it has a set figure of how many officers. And I'm sure, I'm sure the, the revenue has grown over time because there's a lot of more development, a lot more houses, but if it, does it say still 36 officers? So anyway, that'd be something to look at.
Well, I believe last year was the addition of one, and then this year it's staying at 36. So I believe there has been growth.
Okay, I see some nods. So the, the number 36 is just?
Current.
What's budgeted for, it's not required in the ordinance? All right. Paul?
Yeah, first I'll just say that I'll be supporting this budget, but I did want to say that the issue you just raised, Chair Bernard, is one that's been come up often by previous board members or budget committee members. And it's really about the fixed rate, fixed tax rate, which is growing slightly, but costs are outpacing. So this is one in which it's going to be very difficult to, to actually meet the, the letter of the, of the measure that actually approved the LED district. That's, that's a conundrum.
Yeah, it's also a conundrum because it's the sheriff's budget, and we, can we get to zero and start building it? I don't know. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries? Let me see. I'll turn the page.
4H.
With that, I'll announce that the board will now adjourn as the enhanced law enforcement district and convene as the Clackamas County Extension and 4H Service District for the next item. Gary?
Yes, public hearing, resolution adopting the Clackamas County Extension and 4H Service District budget for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Jennifer will also present.
Thank you. I am requesting adoption of the fiscal year 2019, 20 budget for the Clackamas County Extension and 4H Service District. This district was approved by voters in November 2008 to allow programs serving families, youth, and agriculture and natural resource operations in the county to continue and to expand. These services include 4H programs, technical assistance for farmers, family forest owners, nursery, and Christmas tree growers, gardeners, and homemakers. Since the district's inception, it has also been accumulating resources toward its goal of building a new extension education center, which is to be built here on the Red Soils campus. The 2019, 20 budget presented for adoption is as approved by the district's budget committee on June 3rd, and was published in the Lake Oswego Review on June 20th. The actions to be taken are to adopt the budget in the amount of $8,852,401, make appropriations in that same amount, categorize all tax revenue as falling under the general government limitation for Measure Five purposes, and to impose the district's maximum permanent tax rate of .05 per 1,000 of assessed value within district boundaries. We request adoption of the 2019, 20 budget for the Clackamas County Extension and 4H Service District.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have any questions? With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter? Hold back the crowd. With that, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the actions and adopt the 2019, 2020 budget for the Clackamas County Extension 4H Service District as presented in the resolution.
Second?
It's moved in second that we approve the actions and adopt the 2019, 2020 budget for the Clackamas County Extension 4H Service District as presented in the resolution. Any further discussion?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
I think there's about $6 million in the extension budget that's been saved up over a number of years for the purposes of building the new extension building. So that was not just simply disposable income, it was actually a long-term savings plan that the extension folks had, and we can expect to see that expended in the very near future. So don't be surprised next year when you don't see that in the budget. Thank you.
And when you see a building popping up that's?
Nowhere when.
Cross laminate timber.
Yes, it is.
All right, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries? The next item, I'll announce that the board will adjourn as Clackamas County Extension 4H Service District and convene as the Library Service District for Clackamas County for the next item. Gary?
Next public hearing, resolution adopting the Library Service District of Clackamas County 2019, 2020 fiscal year budget, and making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Greg Williams, deputy director of Business and Community Services, will present.
Good morning, commissioners. I'll be brief. Before you, is a resolution and staff report for the adoption of the Library Service District of Clackamas County budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. The Library Service District Budget Committee met on June 3rd, 2019 to hear the budget message, hear public comment, and deliberate on the proposed budget. The budget committee approved the budget in the amount of $22,291,875 with a tax rate of .3974 per 1,000 of assessed value. As per Oregon budget law, a notice of this meeting and a financial summary of the approved budget was published in the Clackamas Review on June 19th, 2019. And with that, I would like to respectfully recommend adoption of the Library Service District of Clackamas County budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Do any other commissioners have any clarifying questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Chair?
Go ahead.
I move we approve the actions and adopt the 2019, 2020 budget for the Library Service District of Clackamas County as presented in the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the action and adopt the 2019, 2020 budget for Library Service District of Clackamas County as presented in the resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll announce that the board will now adjourn as Library Service District of Clackamas County and convene as North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the next item.
The next public hearing, resolution adopting the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District 2019, 2020 fiscal year budget, and making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Scott Archer, the director of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, will present.
Thank you, Administrator Schmidt, Chair Bernard, and board members. Before you, is a board order and staff report for the adoption of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District budget for fiscal year 2019, 20. The NCPRD Budget Committee met on June 3rd to receive and review the, the budget. At that time, the budget committee approved the proposed budget in the amount of $56,908,446 with a district tax rate of 53.82 cents per thousand of assessed value. A notice of this meeting and a financial summary of the approved budget were published in the Clackamas Review on June 19th, 2019. And with that, I would request and recommend your adoption of the NCPRD budget for fiscal year 2019, 20.
Do any commissioners have any clarifying questions? Ken?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, the, I know that it's been a rather difficult year with issues that have to do with NCPRD and Happy Valley. I want to commend you and your staff for your patience in trying to work through some of the issues that we have to work through. I know it's difficult, and it's an organization and a, and a process, a service that's very near and dear to your heart. So thank you for the hard work that you've been doing and your patience as we try to work through the issues with our partner in Happy Valley.
On behalf of all of our staff, we greatly appreciate that, but we really do appreciate the support of the board, so thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter? With no one showing up, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the actions and adopt the 2019, 2020 budget for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District as presented in the resolution.
Second?
We moved in second that we approve the action and adopt the 2019, 2020 budget for North Clackamas Park and Recreation District as presented in the resolution. And any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries? With that, I'll announce that the board will now adjourn as North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and convene as the Development Agency for the next item.
Next public hearing, resolution adopting and approving appropriating funds for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year budget for the Clackamas County Development Agency. Dave Queener from the Development Agency will present.
Good morning. I'm here to present to you the fiscal year 2019, 20 budget for the Clackamas County Development Agency. The Development Agency is the urban renewal authority for Clackamas County, and we are charged with implementing three urban renewal plans, which includes the Clackamas Town Center area, Clackamas Industrial Area, and the North Clackamas Revitalization Area. Funding is typically provided through tax increment financing, a dedicated, dedicated revenue source supporting plan implementation within these areas. However, funding from tax increment financing is received only in the North Clackamas Revitalization Area as a levy in the other two districts have terminated. The budget before you today encompasses appropriations for the three planned areas. The total budget is $69,340,147. As a percentage of budgeted appropriations, approximately 94% of our budget goes towards construction and programmatic expenses. The Development Agency Budget Committee reviewed the budget document on June 3rd and recommends your approval. Notice of these proceedings has been published in the local newspapers as required by local public law. With that, I respectfully request approval of the resolution adopting and appropriating funds in the amount of $69,340,147 for the fiscal year 2019, 20 Clackamas County Development funds in the amount of $69,340,147 for the fiscal year 2019-20 Clackamas County Development Agency budget.
Any clarifying questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
I move we approve the actions and adopt the 2019-2020 budget for Clackamas County Development Agency as presented in the resolution.
Second?
It's been moved and second that we approve the action and adopt the 2019-2020 budget for Clackamas County Development Agency as presented in the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And with this one, this is my favorite one. I'd like to announce that the board will now adjourn as Development Agency and convene as the Clackamas County Service District Number Five Street Lighting Cobra Light Committee for the next two items.
One item.
Oh.
Yeah.
Typo.
All right. This public hearing is a resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget for Clackamas County Service District Number Five. Wendy Coriel from Service District Number Five will present.
Good morning, Commissioners. Wendy Coriel, representing Clackamas County Service District Number Five. Today, I'm requesting that the board adopt the fiscal year 2019 and '20 budget for Clackamas County Service District Five. The board resolution before you today is for adopting the budget for Service District Five and appropriating funds in the amount of $2,705,932. The budget before you today for adoption is the budget that was reviewed and approved by the Budget Committee during the June 3, 2019 Budget Committee hearing, and the notice for today's meeting was duly advertised on June 19, 2019 in the Clackamas Review. The mission of the district is to provide street lighting for the city of Happy Valley and also in the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County. The district contracts with PGE for that design, installation, maintenance, and operation of those streetlights. Those costs are then passed on to those served by the district through assessments that go out in the November property tax statements. Little highlight of the budget, the district is maintaining a construction line for capital projects in the amount of $450,000 and a reserve line for $1,599,777. Each year, the district reviews a rate structure, or each one of the rate structures, there are 12. Last year, the district decreased rates 2% since the five-year forecast showed that there was more than adequate funding for the district. And the five-year forecast this year shows that maintaining the current rates for fiscal year 19 and '20, that the budget will still have enough operating costs and will have an adequate ending fund balance. With that, that ends my presentation, and on behalf of Service District Number Five, I respectfully request approval of the board resolution adopting the budget and appropriating funds in the amount of $2,705,932 for Clackamas County Service District Number Five.
Great. Any clarifying questions?
I do have a question, and this is always an illuminating subject. But I'm curious, in all seriousness, in all seriousness, with the advent of all of the lights were changing over to LED the last few years, are we seeing a reduction in the power cost? And will that ever, do you ever foresee that actually resulting in a reduction in the rate?
We, yes, we're seeing a reduced amount of electricity on our bills, so when we're forecasting, when we have forecasted to expect a 2% increase, which is historically what we've seen, we're not seeing that increase. And so it's allowed us to keep rates stable at the current rate structure. I do see that there is a potential for that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, actually. Have we ever talked about a dark sky policy?
There has been a little bit of discussion on dark sky policy. Currently, we do have one fixture that is a dark sky friendly fixture, and what that means is that it gives full cutoff, and it's decreased the ambient light that, you know, travels to properties and whatnot. So we do have one fixture in place right now. We do work with PGE and collaborate on that, and hope that in the future, we have more lights like that.
Is that in Happy Valley, those ones they have in Happy Valley?
Westbrook is only installed in the city of Happy Valley at this time.
Make sure of that. All right. With that, thank you. We already asked questions. Open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on that matter, on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close it and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the actions and adopt the 2019-2020 budget for the Clackamas County Service District Number Five as presented in the resolution.
Second?
It's moved and second that we approve the actions, adopt the 2019-2020 budget for Clackamas County Service District Number Five as presented in the resolution. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That, I'd like to announce that the board will now adjourn as Clackamas County Service District Number Five and convene as the governing body for water environmental services for the next three items.
Next public hearing, resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget for water environment services. Greg Geist, the Director of Water Environment Services, will present.
Morning, Chair Bernard and Commissioners. I unfortunately don't have this script like everybody else, so I'm just going to try to muddle through and give you the highlights. I'm pleased to present Wes's budget this year. Some of the highlights, well, first, I want to thank Doug Waugh and his crew, Aaron Blue and Carla Atwood. They always do a fabulous job. This is our second, we're going into our second year as the single budget under the West 190 partnership, so I want to thank the board for their support of that. Where some of the more significant issues that we're facing is an almost $250 million capital improvement plan that we need to implement over the next five years. Part of our budget ask is going to be asking for two authorization for two FTE to add to our staffing level in order to support our engineering group in bringing those projects to fruition, as well as one position in our operations group in order to have the resources to operate and maintain the new equipment. Yeah, we're managing both expanding and aging facilities while maintaining a 5% or less rate increase. Our per, our per's costs, like the county's, went up 7%. We were able to find money in the O and M budget and make up for that, and so what we're, well, I won't get into the rates yet, but that's kind of the highlights. Just to remind folks, this is not general fund. This is rates, fees, STCs, things like that. So Wes's total budget is $195,480,622, which includes $74,283,975 held in reserves and ending fund balances, which is not being appropriated and will not be spent in FYI 1920. Wes's appropriations are $121,196,647. And with that, I respectfully request that you approve that appropriation.
Thank you. Ken, questions?
Just a comment again, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to commend Wes and your leadership team and your outreach to the public in particular. You have a technical committee, technical committee that you've convened. I think there's a governing committee that you've convened. I'm not sure if there's a third one or not, but the point is, is you've definitely made a significant, significant effort to do outreach to the general public and get more input from, from folks. Appreciate the efforts, and I also like your Good Neighbor Program. So I want to say thank you for your efforts in both those areas.
Thank you.
Any further questions? With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. You're actually, you're welcome to testify now, we'll just take that in account, on the STCs. You want to testify on-
I think the STCs are included in the budget that you're adopting.
I think it's probably appropriate.
That's fine. I see the STCs as the last one. Thanks for spending all your time.
By three times.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Love budgets. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. So you are correct that I am here to speak about the system development charges that are proposed and the rate increases that are before you today as the third item today, but just wanted to get in front of this because I believe that the SDC revenues are part of the budget that you're adopting for Wes.
Can you speak up, please?
You were away from the microphone. Okay, there we go. So I bring this forward today, and I apologize for the lateness of this. I agree that a lot of work has been done on reaching out to the general public. I think that, I appreciate the time that Mr. Geist spent with myself and Mr. Lewis last Friday. We were made aware of these STCs, or we became aware of them rather recently, within the last three weeks. So we are disappointed, and I appreciate the efforts by Mr. Geist to, I think we've identified some ways that we can work together, both from the local side as well as the county side on communication, especially when it's dealing with system development charges, rates, and the methodology that goes into that, because it does impact all of us. I approach you today just from a fairness discussion. In one of the, our recommendations from staff that must have been with the Advisory Committee, staff is concerned about the impacts of the competitiveness of local businesses and overall economic development if the rate is increased substantially. Clackamas County Service District One, Rate Two, had an system development charge of $7,800 and some. It's going to go up 3% to $7,850. Tri-City, Rate One, has a little over $3,400 system development charge that's going to go up to $7,850. That's a 125% increase for Rate District One for Tri-City. It's a 3% increase for Clackamas County Service District One. And a lot of the material that I saw, there were a lot of discussions about what that impact would be for residential, or what that residential SDC total looks like per jurisdiction. I want to give you some of the commercial side. Light manufacturing, $80,000, $87,250. That's today's rate. It's going to go to $196,250, $109,000 extra. Single family, increasing $4,360. Thirty-lot subdivision, that's an extra $131,000. Office, $40,000, $73,600 current rate. New rate, $165,000, $91,000 increase. Typical hotel, $172,755 current rate. New rate, $380,725, increase of almost $208,000. I question, I do, I, I support what was said here. We need to be competitive, and we need to consider these rates. I understand system development charges. We deal with them at the local level, and this is a hard policy discussion. The decision has been made to look at Wes, to look at CCSD and Tri-City as one. I just, I struggle with putting in a 125% increase for Tri-City in one swoop to go in effect August 1st, and a 3% for CCSD. And I appreciate that there is an out, that to do the two, the total quarter billion dollars is just under $13,000 EDU, and it's a political decision where we set that. But from an equity standpoint, this is not fair. I have no idea why Tri-City is paying for Hoodland. We're looking at it as a district, fine. Then what about the rate differential as well? If we're going to be a district, that should be considered as well. So I, I'm out of time here. I just, I really do think that this is, I just, this is going to be difficult for us as local jurisdictions. And Oregon City, who's going to take the brunt of this with the economic development that we're trying to do to look at these type of increases being put in, in one fell swoop? So thank you for the time.
Paul?
Yeah, well, thanks for speaking, Tony, and bringing here today on behalf of the city of Oregon City, and in some ways as one of the members or partners in the, in the district. My understanding is that the city of Milwaukee also experienced a pretty good hike in, in Service District Number One, so they've also seen that. But I think if I understood correctly, and we have Greg and Doug here both to respond, I like to hear their responses, but as I understand it, we're trying to get some parity on the wholesale side. And, you know, we've been, I've been kind of holding the staff somewhat accountable on, on the STCs in a number of ways, and one of which we haven't addressed yet, and that is that I think that they ought to be somewhat staggered so that a, a home that has two bedrooms or two baths isn't paying the same rate as a five-bedroom home, right? That they're getting a little bit of a discount rate, so we can be competitive and provide, you know, some softening in a difficult market as far as affordability. So I appreciate that. We also make a substantial investment at the Tri-City's plant and, and adding capacity, which I think a growing city such as Happy Valley and Oregon City, where we're just seeing substantial growth, is really, really important, and absent that, but the conundrum really is, if we don't do it on the STCs, we pass that on to the ratepayers. One way or another, those capital projects need to be built, and it's a, it's a conundrum. But I don't, not the believer, because we never, as you know, you said it, it's somewhat political because we don't, STCs don't fully recover everything that they should. And so we've, actually, if we actually had a 100% recovery policy, that rate would be far higher than any of the numbers you stated here today. And I think the reality is, we don't want to pass that burden on to the folks that already paid for their SDC or already paid for their home years back, probably on a fixed income, and this is, this is probably the best way of being as fair as we can in somewhat of an imperfect science. So, but I would like to hear what staff's, any response the staff may have to Mr. Conkles' concerns.
Well, I appreciate Tony and his concerns, and I don't know that we did everything we could have done to reach out to Oregon City in particular, knowing that they are the entity within Rate Zone One that's growing, and it would have been most sensitive to this 125% increase. I will say, you know, the, as a matter of practice, the cities don't consult or, or work with the district when they're doing STCs for their own utilities. For example, you know, Gladstone went from, you know, added many thousands of dollars to their retail sewer treatment SDC, and we didn't know about it. And Oregon City would do the same, and as a matter of practice, that's, that's just how it works. Now, I do think we can do better. I think we can, at least in form, and consult with our cities moving forward, so that we're not kind of piggybacking on these kind of SDC shocks, so to speak. But the fact is, these, they tend to be staircase-type increments. We look at, historically, the last time we looked at STCs for what is Rate Zone One was 2013. So that's five years ago. We've, we have a completely different understanding. We've done a ton of master planning since then, and we have a really good understanding of what our capital obligations are. And the fact is, the math is the math, and it's $13,000 a full-boat kind of thing. And there was a process that we went through with the Advisory Committee to arrive at kind of a, a middle of the road, where growth is paying for a portion of growth, and frankly, ratepayers down the road are also supplementing that. And that's, that's where we landed. It was very unfortunate that, that Rate Zone One was at such a low SDC and experienced such a big increase. I totally get that. And as far as, you know, the fact is, we are achieving rate parity, and, and part of the reason, and when I talk about rates, Rate Zone One is going to have a 3.3% increase, whereas Rate Zone Two will be 5%. And that's, again, to get that one district, if you're wholesale, you're going to pay a wholesale rate, you're going to pay a wholesale SDC. And there's arguments as to why that's not a good idea. I think that there's more arguments as to why it is a good idea. It's one of those threads that if you start pulling it, pretty soon, you've completely unwound this regional approach that we all know, from well before my time, benefits the ratepayers. Having an à la carte, and I'm only going to pay for this, and I'm only going to pay for that, is just not sustainable for a regional utility. A good example of that is Hoodland. You know, people don't want to pay for what's going on in Hoodland. The fact is, our ratepayers in Hoodland have been paying the debt service for the membrane bioreactor for the last, you know, seven or eight years, you know? But they don't directly benefit from that asset. They do benefit in many, many other ways. So we're better off together. I appreciate the city's concerns around fairness, and one of the things that we did agree to was to try to tease out the capital projects that would be required in Rate Zone One and calculate an SDC based on that. I think we owe that to, to the city, and we're, and we're going to go through that exercise so that they can see that 78.50 is a big number to them. But if we had just done this recalculation from what we knew in 2013 to what we know today for just Rate Zone One, what would that number be? My suspicion is it's going to be right in that ballpark and probably more, so.
Okay, thank you. Ken?
Two points and a question. I both, I heard from both of you that better communication is important. So I would expect that you would work on, on that, and frankly, from a district perspective, even more broadly than just Oregon City, the better, the better we communicate, even when we have to make hard decisions, I think the better off we all are. Secondly, I'll remind all of us in this room, as I've said many times before, and I think you're the one that gave me the number, when the plant was originally built, about 80% of that plant was paid for by the federal government.
Correct.
That's no longer the case. The entire mess has, has to be paid for by local ratepayers, developers. The entire mess has, has to be paid for by local ratepayers, developers, et cetera. That's an unfortunate situation for capital projects that are that huge, but that's the position we find ourselves in, which is why this is happening clearly. So I do have a question. Because it may help on the competitive side. Is it possible when somebody, or maybe you do this, but is it possible when somebody is making an application to build a business in Oregon City to make payments rather than an up, a single upfront payment for system development charges? If we, do we do it or don't we? And if we don't, can we?
Yes, we, we can and we do.
Okay. So they're not, they don't necessarily have to pay that whole nut upfront?
Right, they can borrow it. We can lend it to them, basically.
Okay, and then they pay it over time?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Paul?
Well, thanks for the response, and I, in the budget cycles in past, there have been times I have not voted for this budget. And I voted for the budget, did not vote for the budget because of the SDCs and so forth. And for several years now, I've been bringing forth this issue of trying to get a tiered rate for SDCs so that, like, low, like apartment buildings and small homes can be built, be competitive, and be built at a lower cost. And housing is the biggest crisis we ever had. So today, I'm going to, as I voted against the first budget, because I want to see change, I want to see change, and I'm not going to support this budget and make the statement again, I want to see that change.
Can I make a clarification on that? I think there's two separate conversations that we're having. The SDC calculation is in state law, how that's done. It's a math problem, based on your population growth and your infrastructure needs. How we apportion that, and it's, and it's based on impact or potential impact. The, the more important conversation when it comes to affordable housing and applying it fairly is in our rules and regulations, which we are going through right now and having a very public and very rigorous process to do that. And that is where we apportion those, whether it's warehouse, commercial, industrial, or accessory dwelling units or tiny house communities. That's where we can really, I think, move the needle when it comes to affordable housing. Right now, apartments are point eight, and that's about it, below one. So whether it's a two-bedroom house or a ten-bedroom house, it's going to be one, one equivalent dwelling unit, which means one SDC unit, seven thousand eight hundred and fifty. When we start getting down into the impact and start making those gradations, that's where we can make an impact and make the two-bedroom house or the accessory dwelling unit significantly advantaged.
All right, Ken?
I want to make sure I understood your answer, so I'm going to ask the question but in a simpler way. Is it legal for you to have a different SDC rate on a two-bedroom house versus a five, with, with one bath, versus a five-bedroom house with five baths?
I don't know that it's not legal. That might be a question for Stephen. I think we probably have the flexibility to establish those as we see fit. But again, it's, it's, I think it's important to maintain what is essentially math and, and a requirement for methodology under state law and policy and how we apply that.
Well, wouldn't it be reasonable to assume that a two-bedroom, one-bath house is not going to put as much stress on, on your system as a five-bedroom, five-bath house?
That's, that's-
And would that not be a rationale then for a differential in the SDCs?
Well, and again, not-
Mathematically speaking.
Well, so what, what the EDU, the equivalent dwelling unit determination does is it signs one or a portion or multiple units of SDC cost. So maybe this is more complicated than I'm, or I'm not explaining it very well, but you have a pie, and that is your SDC rate, seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. You can assign, somebody comes in the door and they say, I have a two-bedroom house. We develop rules and regulations that say, okay, based on our, your potential impact to our system, we're going to give you a small slice of this pie. And so you pay some fraction of that seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
So you can do what I'm suggesting?
Yes, absolutely. It's just, it's not so much in assigning or establishing a distant, different SDC rate, it's how we apportion the equivalent dwelling units that split the pie.
Because I, I think Commissioner Savis's point on the difference, differential between houses, housing sizes is a valid point.
Absolutely.
If we can get, if we can get there in some legitimate way, and you're not prohibited from doing so by law, then-
Right.
Seems reasonable.
Right, it's just that-
I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
The overall, the overall SDC amount, though, the seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars is really not as important, frankly, as how, when, what our rules and regulations say when somebody walks in the door and says, we want to build this type of structure or this type of development. That's where you give them some fraction or multiple of, of that seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollar unit of SDC. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just want to just say, put simply, that there's other agencies that have done that, so it can be done, it has been done. How it's done technically, within all the language, is complicated, so I, I won't, I won't under, underemphasize that it's, it's not as simple for them to do it, but, but simply put, it can be done, it has been done.
So I guess, oh, go ahead.
I mean, I'll support your budget. I don't believe in holding people hostage, but I think you're hearing a message that would be, that would be helpful.
Yes, and I, the reason I think it's important to make, to maintain that distinction between the SDC rate of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty and how we apply it is because it's going to be a zero-sum game. The establishment of, of the SDC amount is a math problem. How we, that's based on our capital improvement plan. Now, if we, in our rules and regulations, advantage or accommodate low-income housing or tiny homes or things like that, that's, that's fine. But the overall, we, we need to make that up somewhere else. So if we're going to charge less for a, a small home, we need to charge more for a big home. So I think that's where the policy comes in, in implementing the math problem that is our, our SDC.
All right, thank you. One thing I, I had, who decides the SDC rate? A budget committee? Was it presented to a budget committee?
It was presented to the budget committee on June third.
Who makes up the budget committee? And who appoints them?
Well, it's you five, and then it's five folks from a subset of the West Advisory Committee. Markley Drake from Milwaukee, Mayor Axelrod from West Lynn, we have another elected-
Markley Drake's from Happy Valley, by the way.
So did I not say Happy Valley? Help me out here, Doug.
So I, my, my question is, is that, I mean, it's not really a question, it's a statement, that we had a budget committee that reviewed the material. I don't know if Oregon City was there. We have two other committees that I know, we're talking about governance, we're talking about, what is the other subject?
Well, we have, so West convenes our regular advisory committee, it's-
Okay, so I just, and I just want to note that Oregon City's not at the table. And I want to repeat something I've heard once before. If you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So I, I hope to see Oregon City more at the table to have this discussion. And, you know, the one thing we did all inherit when I got here, and this was a decision by previous commissions not to raise the rates, and consequently put us in a terrible position. So I, I think we did hear loud and clear, we need to communicate better, so we'll work at that. Well, with that, thank you. We'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the actions and adopt the 2019-2020 budget for water environmental services as presented in the resolution.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve the actions and adopt the 2019-2020 budget for water environmental services as presented in the resolution. One other comment. Cities don't pay the SDCs, developers pay the SDCs. No developer, did we hear from anybody from the development community?
We have a representative from the Homeowners Association on our advisory committee, so they were informed. We didn't hear anything specific, no.
Okay. All right, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion passes for one. With that, Greg?
I'll go. Next, next public hearing, board order amending and adopting rates and charges for water environment services. Greg will present.
Thank you again. So I think we already got into some of this. What we're proposing at West in order to support this budget and our capital improvement plan moving forward, well, I will backtrack a little bit and say that we are, the West Advisory Committee set kind of backstops for West's rates. They said we need to increase them at an inflationary rate on an annual basis, and we actually tied that to a national metric to ensure that we don't dig ourselves a hole over time by not keeping up with inflation. And we, we want to avoid rate shock, similar to the SDC shock that we just talked about. So no more than a ten percent rate increase year over year. What our forecasting is showing, and what I'm pretty confident, is that we can do what you've asked us to do in, in our approved capital improvement plan with a moderate, approximately five percent rate increases year over year. So that's essentially what we're proposing for both wholesale and retail service in Rate Zone Two. However, we also are harmonizing that wholesale rate across the West service area, so that would result in a three-point-three percent increase for Rate Zone One. And that's just a function of levelizing those two rates. That takes us from twenty-three dollars to twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents per month. We also include the right-of-way fees will also be charged. That's for Gladstone, a dollar twenty per month, Oregon City, a dollar fifty, and Happy Valley, two dollars and fifty-three cents. Yeah, I guess that's, that's all I've got on rates. So I, with that, I respect the request that you approve the rates and fees.
Okay. With that, I'll open the public, any questions?
No.
With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move we amend and adopt that rates and charges for water environmental services presented in the board order.
Second.
It's moved to second that we amend and adopt the rates and charges for water environmental services as presented in the board order. Any further discussion?
Yes, just briefly, I just want to just commend staff for the good work on this particular item and also on the other aspects of the district and how the district's ran. So I don't want my no vote on the earlier item and the next item to reflect any, anything else, but want to see change in that.
Thank you.
And I, I'm sure that, I'm sure you don't feel like you're held hostage. But Greg and I have had this discussion for a long time, and even recently we had this discussion, so it's, it's nothing new. I'm just trying to push the envelope a little bit. I do want to say that I am very pleased with the fact that the digesters and, you know, being built, we're, we're meeting the needs for capacity. And I think you guys run a really clean operation, I think, for the value and the dollar and the rate here. Our citizens out there are getting a great value for what we're providing as far as clean water and our environment, so I'll, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you for that.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item?
Your final, your final public hearing, board order establishing system development charges for water environment services for fiscal year 2019-2020. Greg will present.
Thanks again. I think we've talked a little bit about this so far, so I'll just read through my, my initial notes. We last established SDCs in, in 2013. We've done a bunch of subsequent master planning that's given us a much clearer picture of what our capital needs are and our future obligations. What we are proposing is to harmonize the SDCs for wholesale treatment, and that will result in a four-thousand-dollar increase approximately for homes in Oregon City, Gladstone, and West Lynn, which is significant. It's, it, it's an inflationary adjustment for Happy Valley and unincorporated Clackamas County. The full SDC, again, if we just did the calculation as we're allowed to under state law, would be a little over thirteen thousand dollars. We had, at length, we had discussions at the West Advisory Committee and at the Budget Committee. We presented this information back in March, told them to chew on it for a couple months, came back to them in June, so they're, and then had, I think, a pretty lengthy discussion, although I wasn't at the Budget Committee meeting, I was watching from home on SDCs there. So we think that this is kind of what we, a middle-of-the-road solution. Granted, it does take Oregon City and, and those folks from, you know, almost four thousand dollars, but we're still kind of in the middle of the road when it comes to balancing growth paying for growth and ratepayers subsidizing that. And again, the affordable housing question, it, it really is about how we apportion the, the SDCs, and that's going to be an ongoing conversation. As we, later this summer, we're going to, I think in September, we're going to have extensive conversations with the advisory committee and with you folks about how we set up those tables within our rules and regulations that apportion the, the fractions of, of the SDC charges. Because we know that affordable housing is, is a high priority, and frankly, I'm, I'm interested in it too from a fairness standpoint, because the fact is, we, we have to assign that for the potential impact. And, and the potential impact on a, from a six-bedroom, five-bath home is significantly more than the potential impact where our treatment works from a three-bedroom, one bath, so. One of the things that, that we did in acknowledgement of, you know, we probably could have done a little bit better job teleph, what do you call it?
Communicating?
Yeah. Commu, telegraphing this change to the, especially the development community within Oregon City. And so what we're, what we've done is agreed to not implement this new SDC rate until August first to give us at least another month to, to reach out to folks so that they understand what's going on and maybe have an opportunity to get plans in the door before.
All right. With that, I'll open a public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we amend and adopt the rates and charges for water environmental-
Nope. One down below.
SDCs, next one.
Oh.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move we establish system development charges for water environmental services for fiscal year 2019-2020 as presented in the board order.
Second. It's okay.
It's been moved in, second that we establish system development charges for water environmental service for fiscal year 2019-2020 as presented in the board order. Any further discussion?
Just briefly, I want to just say one thing that I, that you raised, Jim, and that was, the, it's taken a long time to get the SDCs up. I commend that we've got them up to a fairer rate, but we have lost millions of dollars due to the excessively low rate for a long time and that we've made progress. I want to just acknowledge staff that we have made some progress.
Ken?
Thank you. I just point out something that seems to happen in the political environment and particularly at the local level, all too frequently, and it's one of my pet peeves, it's because it's happened to me many times. And that is, is that people will get involved, elected to public office with the promise of never raising taxes or never raising rates. And so it goes on for years and years and years, as has been alluded to by Commissioner Savis. And then at some point in time, a responsible decision has to be made by somebody to get us caught up and get us where we need to be. And unfortunately, it then means a big hit to a city like Oregon City, right at, at a time when they're trying to manage some growth and, and improve their economy. So I'm appreciative of the fact that you have a built-in system based on, on, I guess, CPI or something to that nature, so that it doesn't happen to the next person coming here. But this is, I would say, at least the fourth time I've served on a board in which we had to make these kinds of decisions. It's no fun to do it, and especially when it's as big a hit as, as it is in this particular case. But I would caution people listening to our hearings today to remember that when you get that kind of a promise from a politician, it's not a good practice. In the long run, it'll cost them. So at that, I'll leave it at that.
Now, we did make the motion, we did second it. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
The motion carries for one. With that, I'll announce that the board will now adjourn as Clackamas County Water Environmental Services and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Services and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. We're back. And with that, I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title only in one breath.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Gladstone for East Claritin Street Improvement Project. Approval of a sub, subrecipient grant amendment with living, community living above for youth, marijuana and substance abuse prevention efforts in West Lynn-Wilsonville. Approval of a subrecipient grant amendment with Northwest Family Services for PreventNet Community Schools, Urban Milwaukee, Gladstone and Oregon City. Approval of a local grant agreement with Northwest Family Services for children of incarcerated parents and parenting inside-out services. Approval of a subrecipient grant amendment with Northwest Family Services for youth marijuana and substance abuse prevention efforts in North Clackamas. Approval of a subrecipient grant amendment with Oregon Impact for youth marijuana and substance abuse prevention efforts in Clackamas County. Approval of a subrecipient grant amendment with Oregon, Oregon City Together for youth marijuana and substance abuse prevention efforts in Clackamas County. Approval of a subrecipient grant amendment with Toto Hutos for prevent, prevention and school engagement activities at PreventNet sites in Clackamas County. Approval of a subrecipient grant amendment with Toto Hutos for youth marijuana and substance abuse prevention efforts in rural Clackamas County. Approval of a subrecipient agreement with Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, TRIMET, for dispersment of state, the State of Oregon Special Transportation Improvement Funds for public transit planning and projects in underserved areas of Clackamas County. Approval of a subrecipient agreement with Providence Health Services, Regional Behavior Health for Better Outcomes Through Bridges. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon acting via and through its Oregon, its Department of Human Services for operation of Community Development Disability Services for Clackamas County. Under our Finance Department, approval of a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget less than 10% for new specific purpose revenue and transfer of appropriations for fiscal, fiscal year 2018-2019. Approval of a lease for 16201 Southeast McLaughlin Boulevard with CGF Family Limited Partnership for the Oakload, Oak Lodge Library. Approval of a lease for the Homestead Building with Homestead Building LLC for the Sandy Behavior Health Center. Approval of a lease for the Willamette Building with Willamette Building Partnership. And Gary is going to take it from here.
Yes, approval of a fiscal year 1920 Work and Financial Plan with the United States Department of Agricultural, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service Wildlife Services for Predator Management. Resolution acknowledging expenditures in excess of appropriations and financial statement findings for fiscal year 2018 and describing corrective action in accordance with ORS 297.466. Under elected officials, approval of a previous business meeting minutes. Under Juvenile Department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with multiple cities for the Community Diversion Program Services. Approval of personal, personal services contract with Maple Star Oregon Incorporated to provide short-term residential placement services. Approval of personal services contract with the Boys and Girls Society of Oregon to provide short-term residential placement services. Under Human Resources, approval of a contract renewal between the Clackamas County Department of Human Resources and Mercer Health and Benefits LLC to provide benefits consulting services. Under County Administration, approval of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon related to funding for a future county courthouse. Under Disaster Management, approval of fiscal year 18 Urban Area Security Initiative Subrecipient Grant Agreement with the City of Oregon City. Under County Council, approval of designation of newspaper for the 2019 Property Tax Foreclosure Publication. Under Tourism and Cultural Affairs, approval of the Contract Amendment Number Three with Borders Perrin Norander for Marketing Agency of Record Services for the Tourism and Cultural Affairs Department. Under Technology Services, approval of an ORMAP Intergovernmental Agreement Contract Number DOR-189-19 between Clackamas County and the Oregon Department of Revenue for Digital GIS Tax Lot Conversion. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of a resolution accepting a pathway easement from Saragino Farms LLC.
I'll toast to that.
What was that last one?
Cheragino.
Cheragino.
What did we do with them? Oh, that was the.
North Clackamas Parks and Rec, pathway, pathway easement.
Okay. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. Could you read them individually?
No, don't.
By title only? No. So we have discussion, we have, Ken first, I believe?
Just wanted to point out the subrecipient grant agreement under, with, with Oregon City to help them on their disaster planning. I appreciate that kind of cooperation with our cities. And then I have two compliments for staff. Gail Shalom of Wes and the assistance that she gave to one of our constituents on a, on a pollution issue over near Clackamas River water in a creek. She got tremendous assistance from Gail Shalom. And then the Mount Hood Meadows leadership was very complimentary of our planning department on the help that, that they have given them and how efficient and professional that they, that they have been in marked contrast to a different county, shall we say. And I'll leave it at that.
Great. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on the item 30.5, which is regarding the over expenditures and getting our books all in order. And I just want to show this report from our comprehensive annual financial report, which is quite extensive, but on page 43. And if you look at how well our county is doing, there are very few items on this that we are correcting for today. And the most substantial one was for Central Dispatch for a grant that was received that we are now correcting with this. And I just want to really compliment our finance staff. We are AAA county, we're AAA bond, and we have excellent financial practices. This is part of our statutory requirement. It's what we do at the end of the year. And for me as a commissioner, I'm very proud, have a lot of trust in government, and that's what we need to do as commissioners and as a county is to promote that. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. So Paul?
Yeah, just want to just say that I agree with the Commissioner Fisher's comments and want to give accolades to the budgeting staff for everything they've done. I think it's important that we recognize that improvements are going to be made with this process. And I think that hopefully will not be forgotten.
And I'll go back to school and get my CPA certificate.
Oh, good.
It was so much fun. Anyway, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now, it is 12:18, and we're going to county administrator updates.
I have a two-hour speech I'd like to give, if you don't mind.
Oh, thank you.
Closed.
Actually, quickly, I want to acknowledge that in the, what, the over expenditure list that Commissioner Fisher just listed and was in your consent agenda, we have confirmed that there was an error, that the Clackamas Health Centers Fund, Health, Housing, Human Services, it was not an over expenditure. It was not an error. So I want to publicly state that for the record. We don't correct the, the financial statement because that's done. But I will acknowledge that with you, I'll acknowledge that with department directors, and I will let the health centers know. It's on page 43 that Commissioner Fisher just showed. So the Clackamas Health Centers Funds, that should not have been on the list. They did not over expend. I just want to, I'll, because of time, I won't go into my report today, but just to say again, thank you to all staff and commissioners for all your work you did all year long to approve and adopt the budget. And now we start on the July 2020 budget, starting next month in July 2019. And also a reminder, there is no business meeting next Thursday, July 4th, the Independence Holiday, the county will be closed.
Hey, that was under my announcement.
Sorry, I just do what Mary told me. I do whatever Mary tells me.
Not too far now, Gary.
I apologize, Chair. Forgive me, Commissioner.
All right. We're on to Commissioner Communication and Commissioner Schrader.
I just want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. Be safe out there. Make sure that if you have dogs, as I do, that they don't, you know, have issues with firecrackers with the storm we had last night. I had a 90-pound Labradan trying to crawl onto my lap, and it was quite the experience. The Pomeranian actually did very well. She's fearless, but poor old big dog was a little bit more a wimp than little dog. Other than that, just happy Fourth of July, and I look forward to coming back after the Fourth. I'll be walking in the Lake Oswego Parade, I believe, and probably heading over to West Lynn. And maybe I'll be joining my colleagues at other events across the county. I don't know. We'll, we'll find out. Maybe the Malala Buckaroo. Hey, Ken?
Is that what you're doing?
All right.
Are you in the Buckaroo?
I plan to get there at least once for the rodeo, yes.
All right.
Okay.
All right, we're moving on to, who's PS? Oh, that'd be you, Paul.
Postscript. Yeah, I just must say with that first bolt of thunder, if you will, my cat never saw her move so fast. She shot down the basement, we didn't see her for a few hours. But that, very truthful though. I mean, make sure your dogs, especially those that are outside, are either fenced or watched and, and watch the gate. I know sometimes they just leap, literally leap over them because they're so scared. And more importantly, especially as dry as things are out there, is that fire, I mean, we got to be really be concerned about fire. We had, wasn't Fourth of July, but we had a fireworks thing in the, in Monmouth County on the mountain, and that led to a pretty bad fire. And so it was very, Commissioner Humberson may have been there for that portion of the short-term rental conversation up at the mountain, but I heard some residents up there being very, very concerned about the tinderbox that they live in, in, in light of the, the fire in Paradise, California, and the devastation there. And we have a lot at risk. I just, just want to just, I'll keep it short because we've been here a long time, but please be careful out there and know where your water hose is. And.
Good reasons.
Yep. Be careful.
Thank you. Ken?
Well, as long as we're speaking about the storm, I was on the road when the storm hit on my way to Malala, and two trees missed my truck.
Oh, my gosh.
And a whole bunch of stuff came off of those trees and hit my truck. And I had to sit in the parking lot for about 10 minutes before the rain, the rain slowed down enough that you could get out and go into the high school where the Grange meeting was. So, yeah, it was a mess. I've got a long list of things that I've done this, this last week, but I, I think in the spirit of, of this long meeting, I'll, I'll stop at that point.
Great. Commissioner Fisher?
So just because we have a couple minutes, I couldn't resist the opportunity to share where I was yesterday afternoon at the dedication for the new high school in Happy Valley. It will be called the Adrian C. Nelson High School. Now, Justice Nelson is on the Oregon Supreme Court, and she has had quite the career as a judge and a justice, but she was also my law school professor many, many, many years ago. So I carry her teaching and wisdom within me every single day as I do the work, the very important work that we do here in Clackamas County. But one thing that inspired her interest in the law was when she was in high school, she was the technical valedictorian of her high school in Arkansas. But there was an effort to remove her from that honor because she was African-American. Her mother, who was a teacher for the school district, sued and prevailed, and she did walk as valedictorian of her high school. Not only did she walk as valedictorian, but many of her peers were going to not graduate alongside her unless she was given that honor. So the, it's just so wonderful that as a teacher, as a lawyer, as a justice, that Happy Valley will, has named their high school after her. It was a somewhat contentious issue for the community, but they got through it and they came out better for it. It was quite the celebration, and she's a wonderful Happy Valley resident, and she did proclaim at the dedication that she will be walking those halls and spending time with those students. So what a gift it is for our community.
Great. Thank you. So I was on my tractor when the storm started.
Oh, jeez.
And my, my trailer that I'm selling had the canopy on it.
Oh, boy.
Down, so I had to rush to get an extension cord out to the front of my yard to get that down and then pull the sides in. And while I was doing it, all of a sudden here comes my dog running out because evidently the wind blew the door open and the dog came running out to me, the one that's particularly afraid of lightning and thunder. So I had to get her in, and the chickens were all loose. And anyway, so.
I'd like to have seen this.
And it was, you know, I'm on my tractor and that wind just picked up like really quick, and things are flying all over the yard. And then I got, had one other experience. At 3:51 this morning, I woke up, I always go out, look outside, and I saw a streak of light across the sky, below the clouds, shoot across the sky. And, you know, it was really low for a meteorite, but it probably was. And I thought for a second it looked like a, a rocket. I mean, it was really, really fast, but not like a meteorite you would see and really low. So I put it on Facebook and people are, I didn't have a picture, but I just said it was interesting, what, I don't know what it was, but, but.
Maybe it was the alien invasion.
It could be, but, you know, with all that's going on in, in the world, I watched the sky and it got really bright, I don't, but it was something other than that. It was a light, a car coming down the hill.
That's what it was?
That wasn't the streak, no. The streak, I have no idea. It's the first time I've ever seen anything like that.
Couldn't have been some lightning? Because some of that lightning yesterday was really something.
Could have been a ball of fire, which is, is a possibility. It's not swamp gas, but anyway. Happy Fourth of July, be safe. We're adjourned.